All right. Welcome to the April 9, 2024 City Council Meeting. Madam Clerk, the roll call will show that we're all here. Sorry, our clerk has sort of lost her voice, so I'm gonna...
Counselor.
Except for Councilmember Wagon. I got you. I got you. He's got an excuse to absence. All right. So if you're here for the discussion regarding the Balboa Yacht Basin, we have a bunch of folks in uniform behind just to keep things calm. I'm kidding. They're gonna receive an award. All right, so first, we're gonna go to clarification of items on the consent calendar. Item number one, do we have any clarification of items on the consent calendar? Councilmember Kleiman?
No.
Councilmember Blom? Councilmember Avery?
None.
Councilmember Grant?
None.
Mayor Protem Stapleton?
None.
All right, I have none. So we're gonna move into the proclamation recognizing National Library Week. Do we have someone? There we go. Come on forward. So I'm gonna go ahead and read a proclamation. Then the mic will be yours, and of course, we need to take a photo. By the way, before we get there, on the photo side, I want everybody back there to think about how we're gonna get all of you into one photo. And if we have to go outside and take a photo in front of the fire truck, we can do that, too. But I just want someone back there to coordinate that as we're thinking about it. All right. So on this item, welcome. And so I'm going to go ahead and first read the proclamation, which is, "Whereas libraries offer the opportunity for everyone to connect with others, learn new skills, and pursue their passions, no matter where they are on life's journey; and whereas libraries have long served as trusted institutions, striving to ensure equitable access to information and services for all members of the community regardless of age, interest, or background; and whereas libraries adapt to the ever-changing needs of their communities, developing and expanding collections, programs, and services that are as diverse as the populations they serve; and whereas libraries are accessible and inclusive places that promote a sense of local connection, advancing, understanding, civic engagement, and shared community goals; and whereas libraries play a pivotal role in economic development by providing resources and support for job seekers, entrepreneurs, and small businesses, thus contributing to local prosperity and growth; whereas libraries are an essential public good and fundamental institutions in democratic societies, working to improve society, protect the right to education and literacy, and promote the free exchange of information and ideas for all; and whereas libraries, librarians, and library workers are joining library supporters and advocates across the nation to celebrate National Library Week. Now therefore, I, Will O'Neill, Mayor of the City of Newport Beach, on behalf of the entire City Council, do hereby proclaim National Library Week in Newport Beach from April 7th to the 13th, 2024. During this week, I encourage all residents to visit their library and celebrate the adventures and opportunities they unlock for us every day. Ready, set, library." Congratulations, and thank you for being here. Why don't you go ahead and say whatever you'd like to say?
Thank you, Mayor O'Neill, members of council. I just want to thank you for your support of the library. Thank you for the participation that we've already seen from you for our National Library Week celebrations. We look forward to seeing more council participation throughout the week, during our festivities, at all four of our locations, and continued support throughout the year.
Members of council, thank you for the proclamation. The real superstars are Melissa and her senior staff, Rebecca Lightfoot, Annika Helma, Erin Spivey, and Andy Cacheterian. They are really what holds the library together. If you're not watching the Masters on Saturday morning, and you want to go to the Corona Del Mar Library at 10:30 to see some awesome reading of books having to do with tigers and hippos and a sloth, I've been accused of this a few times, please join my wife and myself for the read-along at 10:30 on that day. Thanks again for the proclamation.
Awesome. So for folks, members of the public, by the way, this is Melissa Hartson, our library services director, and Paul Watkins, the Chair of our Board of Library Trustees. And if you would like to see me read to preschoolers, I'll be doing so on Thursday morning. So anyway, congratulations. Let's give a quick round of applause first. All right. Moving into item number three, we're gonna be having a presentation to our fire department. Who's gonna be making that presentation? Awesome. Thank you for being here.
Thanks for having me. Your slideshow? There we go. Hi, guys. My name is Andy. I'm here representing the Insurance Services Office for Veriskaya. So I don't know if you guys have heard, but for the last almost two years now, we guys have been going through an evaluation for the fire department, for the community overall. Now, what ISO has done is we do this for 38,000 other fire departments. We've been doing this since 1971. So for the last 50 years, about, almost 40,000 fire departments have been evaluated this way, every five years or so. Ultimately, what it's doing is that we use this information on the insurance side, but over the years, it's become very political, and it really drives business into communities and a lot of other factors kind of can play into this. But I don't want to take too much of your time. Ultimately, like I said, we have 38,000 fire departments in our jurisdiction, or I'm sorry, in our database. And out of those 38,000, just over 500 of them are Class Ones, and then the rest are Four, Five, Sixes, Tens, all the rest. But if you look at the statistics, just about 1% of agencies are able to achieve a Class One. And I have a feeling we all know why we're here tonight, it seems. I've noticed a big crowd. I'm not sure why. But the community service is not really, or our PBC, Public Protection Classification, is not really just a fire department review. We really do look at the entire community overall. We look at what happens at the communication center, the water department. We're recognizing, we're looking at recognized standards like American Waterways Association, NFPA, APCO on the communication side. Really, it's just a really full, thorough approach to what we're doing. So some of the items we look at is just some of the infrastructure of the community in relation to communications, like 911 dispatch centers, 911 dispatchers themselves, how quickly they're trained, how quickly they answer the phone, how thorough the system is. And we look at mitigation demographics, where the fire stations are located, what kind of training or equipment that the personnel are, are the personnel on. Water supply, we're looking at hydrants, the size, type, installation, the whole network of pipes in your, in your water supply, the water department side. And then we also look at fires that don't start on community hazard mitigation, so fire prevention, public education, fire investigation, the whole thing. What this really does, or how does this actually impact the whole community, is that generally, the lower the rating in the classification, one is the best, 10 is the worst. Generally, what happens is that as your rating declines, insurance rates on property and commercial insurance in town tend to decline. It's a really, you know, important factor in determining insurance. But a lot of times, like I said, even though this has like a dollars and cents impact on the community, it also has been used politically over the years to kind of be an unbiased review. Nobody else is doing these kind of reviews unless you pay for accreditation. And at least for the fire department, what they've done is really great. And at this time, I kind of want to mention the fact you guys have done your, you've earned the Class One. Like I said, so less than 1% of the population or of, of the 40,000 fire departments that we have have actually been able to pull this off. So this is an amazing achievement for you guys. We actually have an award for the fire department, and I'm joined by my colleague, Jim Hughes, and by the fire chief. And for, actually, I want to give an attaboy to Chief Gillespie as well. He really took the helm on this and got us over the, over the hump and put all this work together. And then Chief Royals is also here. And we're gonna, at this, at this point, I'll get it all. If you guys are ready, we have a plaque to give you, and we can get some photos, and congratulations.
Fantastic. Chief, come on up. Did you want to say anything before you received the plaque?
I will. I really want to echo what Andy just said with regards to Chief Gillespie. He took point on this, and as you can see, there's a small village behind us. This took 22 months. I don't think we've been evaluated here in Newport Beach for about 20 years. So I floated it by Chief Gillespie, and he really took the ball and ran with it. He's now been contacted by Huntington Beach, Laguna Beach, Brea, and Ontario, because his reputation is out there as somebody that knows how to get this done. So with that, I want to recognize all the folks standing behind me as well. Obviously, it takes a village to get this done, but I think it's a testament to the service we provide and the good things that we're doing in this community. We knew we were good. Now we can prove it, so there you go.
Well, so I'm inclined, I'm inclined to actually try to get a picture with everyone who's here, which will probably require us to go outside.
That call is yours. I was thinking we could put everybody right here, but if you want to go outside, we're up for it. We even have retirees here, Mr. Mayor. I do want to point out Tom Arnold, our retired deputy chief in the back, and Steve McNichols as well. So this is, this is important for our entire organization.
Well, congratulations. So what we're gonna do is, I think we're gonna go outside so we can use the steps to kind of get enough people involved. So if you are here and you are from the fire department, why don't we go on outside real quick? We'll take a picture out on the steps and...
We'll get back to the harbor issue in five minutes.
Just, just stay here. We will be here. We will come back, I promise. Awesome. Just a moment. All right. So for members of the public, real quick, what the, what we just actually, what our fire department was presenting there actually means that our fire department is quite literally in the top 1% of all fire departments in the United States. I think you probably knew that, but it's nice to have that validation from an outside agency, so we were celebrating that. Item number four, the presentation of the Carnegie Medal recipient is gonna be continued until the date when our recipient will be able to make it. And then item number five, we're gonna move into the discussion regarding the Balboa Yacht Basin. So we'll start with a, with declaration of conflict, and then we'll move forward in the item.
Yeah, I just announced I have a conflict because of a source of income with an existing investment client who owns real property adjacent to the Balboa Yacht Basin.
All right. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. Simone Jurges, your Assistant City Manager, and with me is Lauren Wooding-Witlinger. She's your real property administrator. This afternoon, we want to talk to you about the results of our RFP for the Balboa Yacht Basin. And we have a pretty extensive presentation, Mayor. So would like to, if it's okay with you, would like to go ahead and go through that. Just to recap, the Balboa Yacht Basin, our RFP was really focusing on the buildings that are at, on the, highlighted there in yellow. That building area is about 14,000 square feet. The general parking in that area is 136 spaces. What the RFP does not include is, it does not include the marina. It does not include Basin Marina. Just those highlighted buildings up there on the top of the screen. Just to recap, you know, that, those buildings are dated. They're built in the 40s. Some deferred maintenance, but it's definitely, it's aged out, and we have to do something with, with those buildings. The existing uses, just to recap, we do have the Gala Cafe. That's definitely staying. We have some office uses. We do have three apartments. We have some residential uses. One of them is vacant. And a lot of garages that are used for, really for storage. What you see on the screen is just, we want to share with the council that all the revenue that is generated from the marina or from the buildings or from Basin Marina are split between 53% of the uplands, which is your general fund, and then the other 47% has to be set aside for tidelands. So all of it, we include it all together in one bucket, and then we do that split of 53% to 47%. And that's kind of an important piece to this. What we generate currently from those existing buildings, not from the marina, not from Basin Marina, is about 392,000. You split that up between your tidelands and your general fund, and the general fund collects about $207,000 a year. So what we've always had in plan in the works is our, in our facility financing plan, our FFP, is that we're saving money to do a development project in the future. And you could see that we have planned, our public works department was planning on starting design work in 2025 and then actual construction in 2028 to tear everything down and rebuild those buildings that we've talked about. Our conversation with the council is like, is there another way to approach this? Instead of the city spending the 15.8 million in 2028, do we want to enter in a public-private partnership with a developer? Let them invest the money to redevelop that, those facilities, and then we can save that money and use it for allocation to something else. And that's what, what our RFP was for. There on the screen, we did write the RFP. We released it in December, late December of '23, and then we did get responses in '24. It's really important that, and I put the scope of work up on the screen. Our scope of work was very specific. It is, deals with rebuilding of the Gala Cafe, storage facilities, offices, showers, oil collection, enhancement of maybe Myrtle Park. And that last sentence of our scope of work was very specific. You know, the city is not interested in expanding or preserving the existing residential units. Very specific scope of work. When we went out to market, we only got two proposals. Proposal one was for what our scope of work was really intended for, which is preserve Gala Cafe. We have expansion of really the offices, more storage, dry racks, enhancements of Myrtle Park and the oil collection and restroom. And then we have proposal number two, which was different than what our RFP was, which was a full build-out of 10 single-family detached residential units and preserving Gala Cafe. Only two proposals, very different proposals, and these are local developers. We wanted to respect the, the developers that we have that are in town. And this is really why, the reason we're here before you this evening, because we see two different opposite proposals. We only got two. One met the, the scope of work, one did not. We wanted to share with the council our thoughts as we go through this presentation. The residential project is very difficult to do because of coastal and Surplus Lands Act, and we'll get into those little bit details next. What I do want to start going through now is the actual proposals. So I'm gonna hand it over to Lauren, and she's gonna start talking about both of these proposals in more of a high level.
Thank you, Simone. The first proposal from Burnham Ward Properties focused on removing the residential units at the site and keeping the existing mix of commercial uses and amenities for the slip tenants in the marina that exist at the site today. The proposal would maintain a similar footprint to the existing structures and increase the number of office units and storage units, and it would result in a net increase of 2,675 square feet of gross leasable area. On the west side of the site, it would add and convert second-floor space to office units. And on the first floor, it would convert the garages to more traditional storage units that would be accessed from an interior hallway or corridor. On the east side of the site, the office units would be added and converted on the second floor as well. And again, the existing garages on the first floor would be converted to storage units. And the Gala Cafe would remain in place, would be refreshed in its current location, and would have the option of a new outdoor dining patio. View of the facade from the marina shows that the materials and colors would be consistent with other Newport coastal designs. The existing parking and drive-aisles would remain in place as well, and new second-floor patios would be added in front of the office units. This view is of the proposed dining area for Gala Cafe and also shows a refreshed Myrtle Park at the entrance to the site. So in summary, the proposal from Burnham Ward Properties would be to either replace or substantially remodel the existing buildings, refresh Gala Cafe and add some outdoor dining, intensify the number of office units as well as the storage units. They have also proposed to modify the city's dinghy storage racks, enhance Myrtle Park, and redo the restrooms and showers that serve the marina tenants. 136 parking spaces, which is the existing parking count, would be retained on-site. And the developer would ground lease a portion of the overall property and would be responsible for construction of the improvements, all of the leasing and management of the tenants, maintenance of the new structures, and would remit a lease payment to the city. The anticipated project cost for the developer would be about 14.5 million, and we would anticipate receiving approximately $100,000 once the project was stabilized, which the developer anticipates would occur in year three. And again, as Simone mentioned, because of the split of tidelands and uplands of the property, a portion of that revenue would go to the general fund, and a portion would go to the tidelands fund. And we anticipate that the entitlements for this project would include complying with the Surplus Lands Act, a coastal development permit, and site development review. Proposal number two is from Basin Neighborhood Partners. This proposal is to convert the property to more of a residential development. The project would remove the existing office and garage units and replace it with 10 single-unit residential properties. It would add a new point of access on the west side of the site you can see indicated with the red arrow. That would be for the marina parking. It would add a new public park with a limited number of storage units at the west end of the property and expand the existing Myrtle Park on the east side of the property. It would have a new restroom and shower structure as well as a small office space for operation of the marina. And the Gala Cafe would remain in place. This view of the facade on the east end of the site shows the Gala Cafe in the background and the new office and restroom shower facility there in the foreground as well as the other residences going, going to the left. In addition to the new and expanded parks, the sidewalk along the seawall would be expanded to be more of a promenade and would have a landscape buffer between the sidewalk, the publicly accessible sidewalk, and the residential units. All of the 10 units would be three-story structures with living space on the second and third floor and semi-subterranean parking on the first floor. These images reflect some of the interior concepts and finishes that the developer put together. And some of the units would include a roof deck for additional outdoor living space. So in summary, this proposal would add 10 new single-family homes. It would keep the Gala Cafe in place, expand the existing park and add a new park, and provide some limited amenities for the marina, including offices and restrooms, and then some additional dry storage, some small portable units. The parking would be kept at the existing parking count of 136 spaces. The project would be fully funded by the developer, and then they would sell the developed homes to individual homeowners. And the city would have a ground lease to those homeowners with a similar structure to the Beacon Bay properties that are nearby this site. The anticipated project cost for the developer is 44 million, and the revenue to the city would be approximately 1.4 million at year four and would escalate from there based on CPI, again, very similar to the Beacon Bay home lease structure. Again, this would be split between the general fund and the tidelands fund. And as Simone mentioned, the entitlements for this project are a bit more extensive. It would require compliance with the Surplus Lands Act, coastal amendment, coastal program amendment, sorry. The general plan would need to be amended. A zoning change would need to be processed, site development review, and some additional environmental review.
I'm gonna continue on and close this out. So up on the screen, we just put just more of a comparison, and you know, you have one project there. Both fantastic projects, beautiful designs for both the commercial use or residential use. Both very, very sophisticated developers, but very opposite types of projects. One is really develop the commercial buildings, their proposals to manage it, and then do a ground lease with the city. And you could see in proposal one, that ground lease is about 100,000. We feel that is much more compatible with the marina use that we have. And then proposal two, we talked about, which is the 10 single-family homes, their dry storage, plus the additional park. They would develop the homes, sell those homes, and that would be their profit. And then a ground lease would continue with the city in perpetuity. None of these lease structures that you see on the screen have been negotiated. These are just the proposals from the developers, but you know, I'm just sharing what they've shared with us. All this needs to get worked out and negotiated out. We think proposal one is much fits the, where the marina use, much more compatible, and then the, the homes are more of a less compatible use. And I think from the entitlement...
Sorry, can we go, go back for just a moment? On this one with proposal number two, since it's a, since it'd be a for-sale residences, who would the ground lease be with?
So there would be a, we haven't got to the, all the details, but they would be the master developer, the Basin Neighborhood Partners, and then they, they would sell that unit, and then we would have a lease structure with that individual homeowner, similar as we do with Beacon Bay. So there would have to be a transfer once they subdivide those parcels, and then we would have to enter into a lease with the new homeowner for each of those parcels as they, as they go forward and build those out.
And would that presumably be true for the people who... So is, are the offices also going to be rented, or are they for sale?
They're just for rent. It's a for-rent product on proposal number one.
So proposal, on proposal, I'm talking about proposal number two.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's okay. Let's just focus on, I'll focus only on two on this one. So we have for-sale residences. Are the offices for rent or for sale?
Those will be for, for rent, and then the city would collect those rent revenues. And then Gala Cafe would also be for rent, and the city would collect those rent revenues.
So, okay, so they, when they, so if they built the, the whole of the, of the property, they would sell, they would, they would, the developer would sell the 10 units?
Correct.
But we would get, the city would get the rights to own the offices and also the Gala Cafe buildings? And then the Gala Cafe would have a lease with us, and the offices would have a lease with us?
Correct.
And then the dry...
We have, we currently have a lease with Gala Cafe.
Oh, yes.
Right.
I know.
That would continue.
I try, I try really hard to go there and make sure that they can pay their lease. But the, but the dry storage on the 40 units also, that would, that would also be ours to rent out.
That's correct.
Okay. All right, I think I understand. Go ahead.
Then I think it's really to, it's really good to understand, and we put a lot of time into understanding the kind of the entitlement process for both projects. So you have your proposal one, which really fits our LCP, our zoning, our general plan. There's really no change. The idea would be to either strip those buildings down to the studs or even demo those buildings and rebuild them. From a Surplus Lands Act, we, we did some research. It is exempt. We would have to approve a resolution. The council would have to approve a resolution, and we'd have to file it with HCD and wait 30 days. With proposal number two, it's a little bit more challenging. So our local coastal program, we're a certified agency, does not recognize residential. So if we were to amend our LCP, we would, that would have to go to the Coastal Commission. We've had some discussions with the Coastal Commission to say, hey, would you have any concerns if we converted this to residential? And they did. They had strong concerns about converting anything to residential, especially for, from a marina use, because they want to preserve that commercial marina-serving uses. Residential is kind of low on their, their priority. Not to say impossible, but we didn't get a warm and fuzzy from the Coastal Commission on doing an LCP amendment for residential. It would, we would need to process a general plan amendment. And then when you get to the Surplus Lands Act, it's gonna be different than proposal number one. So for proposal number two, the council would have to declare it a surplus... the council would have to declare it a surplus property and go out to market and allow the affordable housing developers the first bite at the apple. And we would have to negotiate in good faith with the affordable housing developer if they want to develop affordable housing. That's just how state law is written now in California. The rest of it is not so concerning. I think that that LCP amendment is that... I colored that in red because I didn't get any positive sense from the Coastal Commission. And then if we want to continue with proposal number two, we would have to declare it a surplus and put it out to market. So we think proposal one is much easier from an entitlement standpoint. Proposal number two, much harder. And our thoughts are really to continue with proposal one. And then from staff's recommendation, and again, this is why we're here before the council. We want it to be transparent with the public of what the two proposals are. We feel proposal one really meets our scope of work. And if the council is supportive of that, we would go ahead and develop an exemption to the Surplus Lands Act for council consideration. Then we would move forward after that and negotiate and enter into an ENA with the first developer for proposal number one, so that way we can work out all the logistics and the negotiations for that proposed project for proposal number one. And that concludes our presentation.
Could you go back to the comparison slide? One more. So on the Burnham Ward property, on the proposal number one, the reference to storage is one hundred and four units. How many do we have now?
Thirty-two.
So it was thirty-two larger garages, and these would be much, probably smaller in size.
Got it. Okay. Do we have representatives from the proposers? Would you like to speak? Since we're listing them as proposal one and number two, why don't we go with proposal number one first? Come on forward. How long do you think you need?
Three minutes. Is that okay?
That's fine. Yeah, go ahead.
Four. Is four okay? Good evening, council members and Mayor O'Neill. Thank you for your time. I'm Ryan Rhodes. I'm with Burnham Ward Properties. I'd like to speak briefly about our company and the plans for the Balboa Yacht Basin renovation. Our company is located here in Newport Beach, and as principals, are lifelong residents of the community. Because of this, we are very mindful of the importance of the Balboa Yacht Basin has as a public amenity to the surrounding neighborhood and the immediate boating community. With that, our plan is to preserve the character and charm of the local neighborhood and retain the same tranquil maritime integrity that was intended by the original development. Our proposed renovation and upgrades features, among other things, just to give a little bit more color to what was presented, board and batten and shiplapped-sided buildings, gable chingle roofs, which all have residential quality and look and feel that we think will blend in seamlessly with the adjacent community. Most importantly, many of our upgrades and improvements will remain the existing building footprint and will conform to the current site plan. Vehicle ingress/egress access to the site and circulation will remain unchanged. And as mentioned, we'll keep the same uses that exist today in terms of office storage, Galley Cafe, albeit in a very upgraded fashion, residential would be eliminated. Our company is deeply invested in this community. Their longtime legacy owner are commercial properties throughout the city and have extensive experience in renovating properties like this. It's clear the existing improvements have run their useful life and is in need of a significant renovation, and we think our company is the right one to do that. I think I'd just like to give a couple highlights of some example properties that our company has renovated in the area. Couple notable ones. One is, we call it 3366B Alito, which is, was, an outdated nineteen-fifties mid-century building designed by a notable architect. And our company invested heavily in the restoration of that building and encouraged the major company, SAP, to put one of their unique innovation centers in that space. That property also includes some waterside docks as well. Another notable property that we recently completed along the Seventeenth Street corridor is Mariners Medical Arts, which is somewhat of a historic renovation in partnership with the City of Newport Beach in terms of the design for that renovation. Prior to ownership, the property had fallen into disrepair and accumulated some considerable deferred maintenance. Our company can work closely with the City of Newport Beach to carefully restore that complex, staying true to the original notable architect, Richard Neutra, the original vision while keeping the property functioning during the renovation. There's a few other examples in the area that our company has renovated. It would be Castaway Commons on Seventeenth Street as well, the J. Herbert Brunel Building, and Mariners Mile 3700 in Lido, Edwards Gilding Building, and several others in the area. So as stated, ultimately, if we're selected to perform the proposed renovation work, we intend to make it our mission to implement the much-needed improvements in a way that retains the original character and vision of the project and that serves an exceptional first-class amenity supporting the Balboa Basin boaters and the local community.
Great. Thank you very much.
Very much.
All right. Representative from proposal number two.
Mayor and council members, thanks for having us. Thank you for your time on this. And I want to thank the staff for the hard work they've put into this project. I know they've put a lot of time into understanding these two proposals. First of all, this is my son, Kevin Hayes Jr. I wasn't very creative when it came to naming him. And I'm Kevin Senior, and it's my wife, Alice. This is a family venture for us. We office right in the middle of the Marina today. We're a tenant in the subject property and a proud tenant there. So we know the site very, very well. We've studied it for a long time. Our capabilities, we came to the project, our capabilities frankly lean more towards commercial development. And it would have been very easy for us to conform to the commercial bias that the RFP had. However, the RFP did encourage creative alternatives to be offered to the city. And when we studied the site, we did not think a commercial application was a proper use of this site. And by the way, I want to say that the council has two quality developers here that have done great things for this city and you're not going to have any problems with quality or delivery of product. And I have a lot of respect for Scott Burnham's company and what he's proposed, but we're proposing something very, very different because we thought it was better for the city of Newport Beach. We wanted to, we approached the site by trying to create public spaces. We wanted to give the prime real estate to the public. So we created not only two parks, but we created this promenade that will connect these two public spaces and invite people to come to this new neighborhood amenity. And that was our priority when we developed the site. The residential application, we thought, would be by far more amenable to the neighbors. I noticed that the staff thinks that the proposal number one is more compatible with the Marina. We weren't really concerned about being compatible with the Marina. We don't think those boats have a lot of say. We wanted to make it more compatible with the neighborhood, and we think those folks have a lot to say about what is going to be there. And we think the residential application is going to reduce the parking requirements in the area, reduce the traffic requirements in the area. And I want to touch on some of the things that we learned, how the staff has evaluated our proposal. I will note that our economics, that the staff chose year three as the income of our proposed alternative. We will not have the site fully built out by year three. It wouldn't be until year four. And our stabilized revenues will be 1.7 million to $2 million is the range that we expect the income actually to be. And if you compare the two proposals to one another on an annual basis, that's a pretty staggering number. But the scope of this RFP is a fifty-year scope, and we think you are making a fifty-year decision. If we use the staff numbers, the differential is 1.3 million dollars per year. That's $65 million over the course of the life of the RFP. We think the number is more like 90 million is the difference in revenue that our proposal is going to produce. We think it's going to be better for the neighborhood, better for public parks and public spaces. It's going to open the site. And we think, and by the way, we agree with the staff, that our proposal is going to be a little more difficult to go through entitlement processes. We don't think it's impossible. If I were the City of Newport Beach, is it worth it to take a few months to work with the Coastal Commission to figure out if we can do this plan for the sake of getting 65 million to $90 million more revenues for the next fifty years and to have a site that's more compatible with the neighborhood? We think the answer to that is yes. The city, by the way, if the city is so anxious to move forward with an inferior plan, I think that's wrong-headed. These buildings have been there for eighty years. If you had to evaluate it with our, take a chance on our proposal, take a chance, if you will. We've seen no chance that this Coastal Commission is going to deny our residential solution. We see it might take some time. I think it's worth six months of, at least six months of trial for the sake of not only what it does economically, but what it does to the neighborhood. And I'll defer the rest of my time to my colleagues if they want to add something to that.
Well, I believe that the neighborhood-
I'm sorry. Just because we're videotaping, I just need to make sure you're in front of the mic. Awesome. Thank you so much.
Having office there for three years as our family office, we've kind of experienced the neighborhood. And you know, it's a family-friendly group of people. There's bikers, there's walkers with dogs. And it's not a office destination, doesn't seem to fit with the character of what the neighborhood is. I mean, everybody comes to the galley and loves it, and we're adding these two amazing parks, a walkway to enjoy the boats and the sunsets there are fabulous. And the whole community could really enjoy, and the citizens could come and enjoy eating at galley and having a wonderful promenade in two parks. I think it just is a lovely opportunity, and the economics speak for themselves. You know, to one proposal versus the other. The existing buildings have been, we toured one of the apartments, and it was almost just a complete teardown. They've been empty, and it's not something I see as worthy of replicating. Let's be visionary and think what is best for the city, what's best for the neighborhood, the citizens, and enjoy that sunset harbor that is available and bring in the neighbors to enjoy it. So.
Council members and Mayor O'Neill, thank you for taking the time. I'll point out, this is the first time my family and I have ever worked together on a project, so it's been-
But we've known them for a long time.
It's been a fun treat. And of the family, I came involved because I've got commercial experience. We own Huntington Harbor, where we've got Peter's Landing Marina, it's a ten-acre site, three hundred boat slips, landslide improvements with restaurants, office space, Starbucks, hair salons, et cetera, in addition to another project down in San Diego, which is a ground lease with the City of San Diego called Liberty Station. And so of the family members, my experience with the Coastal Commission is the most pronounced. We candidly thought as a family, we were going to look at this both ways, that we would look at a commercial proposal in addition to the residential proposal, and ultimately decided against it for a number of reasons. This is the first time we've had the chance to see Burnham's proposal, and we think components of it are really great. In fact, maintaining the Galley Cafe is something that was, something heavily discussed and something we really wanted to see. And I think some of their improvements can be incorporated into this plan. Obviously, it's excluded from the ten home sites that really generate this revenue. We stopped short of providing any outdoor dining because we were under the impression that the Galley Cafe's kitchen couldn't support it. And that was proved out during COVID, apparently. And secondly, we looked at office. We looked at additional retail, which we didn't think would be consistent with the site. But the amount of office that we're talking about adding under the other proposal would generate a lot more trips to the site, and we thought that would be not characteristic with the neighborhood of having a lot more car traffic. And you know, ultimately, we thought by providing a 139-foot view corridor that doesn't exist today and additional public parks that were, parks that could belong to the HOA and still be open to the public, we would be able to satisfy Coastal Commission with some of their concerns about public access, which is really where they become concerned. And we're giving the best parts of the site to that. Ultimately, our proposal, and I do want to point this out because I've heard this from a number of the neighbors, that they were concerned about parking being removed. Our parking actually increases the amount of parking available to the Marina because there's no parking required for the homes. It's all underneath those homes, and we're removing the commercial supply that exists there. If you put just normal office ratios, the boats are going to have very, very, like, few parking spots left. And I think it would be heavily impacted if we were to go commercial. So we're excited about the product. We thought it spoke for itself and appreciate everybody's time, staff's time, and always here to answer any additional questions you might have.
Great. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
All right. So for folks that have not come to a council meeting before, let me just tell you real quickly, we are in a study session. And so what that means is literally what it sounds like. We're studying the issue. We won't be making a decision today, although we might give direction to staff to bring something back to us. But there's not a up or down vote today, just an FYI. Before I go out to public comment, any questions or comments from council? No? Okay. All right. So we're going to go out to public comment. If you'd like to speak, you're more than welcome to line up. And then we've got, both mics will work. So if you come on up and someone's already speaking, just go to the other mic. And when you're ready, you can go ahead. Come on up.
Honorable Mayor O'Neill and members of the City Council, my name is Bill Kenny. I'm here this afternoon with Mr. Ken Rinker. We're authorized to represent the Promontory Bay Community Association. As you know, this is the first time that the public at large has seen these two proposals. Our community, along with the Beacon Bay community, will be the community's most impacted by any redevelopment of the land-based improvements at the Balboa Yacht Basin. I'm hopeful that the proposed redevelopment of the Balboa Yacht Basin will be at the beginning of a long and iterative process. Our association wants to be involved in what we hope will be a collaboration among the city and the developer so that the final project, when it is brought back to you for review and approval, will be something that we can all support. We look forward to working with the council. We certainly look forward to working with staff and with the developer to bring you something we can all be proud of. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Paul Fruchbaum. I've been a citizen here for fifty years. I've had a slip in the Marina for about thirty years and a garage for a couple decades. I'd like to leave you with just three thoughts today. The RFP was based on an assumption that the buildings are obsolete and at the end of their useful life. You will hear from many tenants there that for their existing use, they're okay. There's a redwood structure there, and most of the garages have been renovated by the tenants, so they're in good shape and have, from our perspective, many years to go. And I think everybody that uses these facilities is happy with them. When I looked at the, second thought is when I looked at the numbers that Burnham put up, I liked, it was a great design. But if you run the numbers, they're looking at about a 2% or less yield on their money. So what's the future? Well, the future is to get a reasonable yield is three or four times to increase the rents. Assuming that the market would sustain that, I suggest that this amenity is better run for the benefit of the city rather than a for-profit developer, which I am one. So I think when you look at the future, nobody would spend $14 million and take the construction risk for a 2% yield, which based on your numbers is about what it would be. So I, as a tenant, would look forward to seeing my rents tripled or quadrupled. None of that would go to the city. My last point I would leave you with is that the parking study that showed that there was sufficient parking- there was sufficient parking from any tenant there, any user of the marina will tell you is just wrong. It's underparked. That study was done in October, and most of the time there, especially on weekends, especially throughout the summer, it's almost impossible to park there unless you get there at five in the morning. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Mayor O'Neill, council members, thank you for hearing me. My name is Brian White, and I only operate the Galley Cafe. As you know, it's been in my family for, going on seventy years. My grandparents started it, and I just want to be on record as saying that I look forward to working with the council and want to make myself available. I grew up there from age nine. I was a dishwasher, and I still am. Still trying to work my way up. Anyway, it's exciting and interesting, and I just wanted to say I look forward to what's going to develop and would like to be a part of that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Well, we expect you to be part of it, so appreciate everything your family's been doing for decades. Thank you. All right, next speaker, please.
My name is Chris Webb. I'd like to thank council for your service and for inviting us to come today to speak. I am a Newport Beach resident. I also have a slip in Balboa Yacht Basin. I've had that for the last almost twenty years, and I've had a garage for the last eight years there. And I'd just like to say, I think there's been a lack of public engagement or engagement with your tenants or current customers in paying good rents to the cities, city for both the slips and the garages. We see the garages as a critical, essential amenity to the marina, and, you know, any proposal the city considers should give thought to that. Also, I think what we're missing is proposal number three, which would be looking at restoring or doing a minor renovation to the existing structures and looking at that on a financial analysis as well. I think it's absurd that there's an assumption we need to spend fourteen million dollars. Where does that come from? What is the specific scope that the city needs to have done to the existing structures? And what are the actual costs that would entail? So, we're saying we need to spend fourteen million dollars, but anybody that occupies and uses the marina currently would say that's ridiculous. Why are we doing that? Why not just leave it the way it is? We're all happy. So, would encourage council to put pause on this, get some engagement from the community, the marina tenants, and look at the RFPs and the different proposals from a community standpoint and how best to serve the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Adam Leverens. First off, it would have been really nice to have seen these materials before now. I don't know if this is the first. You've all seen them. I just was able to formulate thoughts looking at them on the screen up there. As far as proposal number one, even though it indicates that there's only two residences there, you've heard me say before that I think doing away with residences is something that should be avoided. But on the other hand, the ten residential properties in proposal two, quickly doing the math, for those ten units plus the cafe, the ground lease on each site would be a hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand dollars a year, and I just wonder if that's realistic. I wonder if semi-subterranean garages are okay with the water table in that location that close to the bay, if that might lead to problems in the future. If there's only two office spaces in the number-two proposal, is that a reduction from what there is now? And does that put some businesspeople out of office space? And then the remark that the boats don't have a lot of say in the matter, as you can imagine, I took a little exception to that. Just looking at that up there, I figured maybe there's a hundred-and-sixty slips in Balboa Yacht Basin going by the, you know, most prevalent mooring of forty foot. They're paying two grand per month. That works out to three-point-eight million dollars a year. And again, that's quick calculations based on the graphics. At three-point-eight million a year, I think that they should have some say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, I'm Cindy Paulson, and I live in Beacon Bay, and my house is probably the house that's most affected by this development. We're in the storage unit, on the, right behind the storage unit. I had a couple of questions with the proposals, is that's okay?
So, it's not, but you can ask them, and then I can ask them afterward, but-
Okay. I wanted to know the height of the two proposals and the existing height, and I also wanted to know with proposal number one, what they were going to do with the storage unit on the end closest to Beacon Bay.
Okay. I wrote them down.
One of my concerns with it is with proposal number two, our house is severely affected by the street being right behind our house. It's literally ten feet from our kitchen, our master bedroom, and that parking there, and that street's a highly, will be a highly-used street. I don't know if people realize, but the fishing, the boats, the people who use the boats, they're coming in at four, five in the morning to go out early in the morning, and a lot of times they're coming in late at night after a long day at sea, under the influence. And not that it's a great place. I'm not trying to criticize it at all, but it's going to be ten feet from my house. Another issue is parking. Even though they say the parking spaces are the same, over by the galley, the galley's going to lose a lot of parking. The parking in that area is for the yacht, what's that yacht?
Basin Marine.
The boatyard, thank you. The parking over there is all used for the boatyard. So, the galley will have very limited parking because the proposal number two is they're losing all the parking on Harbor Island Drive because their houses are facing Harbor Island Drive. So, you're losing almost all of Harbor Island Drive, half of it, to the houses. So, the galley's losing all their parking, and during the weekend, and that parking is used for overflow for the construction of all the homes on Beacon Bay, Harbor Island, Harbor Island Drive. And on the weekends, there's bikers that come, park their cars there, and meet there to go off-bike. So, the street is always crowded there, and you're losing all this parking. Thanks.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, council. Mayor O'Neill, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Wade Womack. I've been a slip runner at the Balboa Yacht Basin in the past. I'm an avid boater. I love our city, love our harbor. Just wanted to share a few thoughts. Can we keep Newport Newport? These buildings down there are historical, they're quaint, they're cultural. They're low-profile. They really fit in with our harbor, and keeping Newport Newport. Just some random, or kind of bullet point thoughts. Both these proposals seem to increase the intensity of use in the area. It's already pretty crowded. You're hearing concerns about the parking, and I don't know if we want more cars and more people in terms of offices and that kind of thing. I noticed proposal one brings in three hundred grand a year, and I think the existing use brought in something like three-sixty. So, it seems like a lot to go through for very little pickup. The Balboa Yacht Basin, if you include the slips, it's a cash cow for the city. It's a really neat revenue source. Next, the, there's just really good balance of use down there. It's a perfect balance. It works with the parking. It's a little crowded on the parking, but everything works, and to add more uses down there, I don't know if that's ideal. And then, as stated, where is proposal number three, which is just a basic remodel? Couple, million bucks, shape up whatever you think needs to be shaped up, maybe beautify slightly, and keep Newport Newport. And then I'd like to throw out another idea is how about a nonprofit? We have lots of nonprofit yacht clubs and sea bass and other entities out there. There's certainly capable people that occupy down there, and how about forming a nonprofit where instead of handing the property off to a for-profit company that will certainly raise rates, how about a nonprofit? And if you can do a long-term lease, give the folks that are down there an opportunity to form a nonprofit, or there's currently a yacht club down there that could certainly put this together and really bring the community together and bring the boaters down there together and have something at a community level that we could all really take a lot of pride in. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, mayor and council members. My name is Kathleen Anderson. I'm the commodore of the, thank you Wade for mentioning us, of the Balboa Basin Yacht Club. In the RFP, I noticed that we weren't even mentioned, and we have less than a hundred members, but we're an important business down there. We're nonprofit, of course, but we do a lot for the marina. We have members that walk the docks. If there's problems, we call the city. Lauren knows me very well. I called her many times. And I just also want to say about the parking, it's always been a problem, and if you take either one of these proposals, I've been down there during the summer, and sometimes you can't even find a place to park, and you end up going over to, across Coast Highway and then having to walk in. And it's gotten a little bit better in the fall, but in the summertime, it's really hard. But anyway, I don't want our Balboa Basin Yacht Club to be chased away. And like I said, we have less than a hundred members, and if they rebuild everything and change the cost, we would be out. We wouldn't be able to be there. So, I just want you to take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, city council, and staff. My name is Dave New. I'm president of Basin Marine, proud left sea of the Balboa Yacht Basin. Our family's been there for seventy-seven years. We're wanting to stay there another seventy-seven years, but we'd be more than happy to work with the council and staff on any new or existing proposals. I would like to say that proposal number two, and I know it's in the early stages, but would impact our business probably a good twenty percent as far as being able to offload vessels from tractor-trailer rigs coming from all parts of the United States and that. And that would mean there would only be one other boatyard in Newport that could do that. So, that would limit, our tractor-trailers need to go past the galley in the parking lot area, about five or six garages before they can make, you know, back into our facility. So, just I'd bring that up, and we'd be more than happy to work with you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. I think you know my sponsorship. I'm third generation of Basin Marine, and just want to be able to work with the community on what goes forward. I do like the idea of proposal number three of renovating and not hindering our drives for offloading and unloading boats. Just would appreciate to help storyboard with everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Ken Rinker. I'm on the board of directors of the Promontory Bay HOA, which is right across from the galley. It includes sixty-one or sixty-two homes that are all on Harbor Island Drive. They wrap around and on Bayside Drive. All of our homes have docks, and so we are boaters. And it's important to us, anything that has changed at this development, it affects us. We are literally right across the street. It doesn't matter if you live on Bayside or if you live on Harbor Island Drive. What happens to our neighbor and his home, it affects, and if his home is devalued, it would devalue our home as well. Basin Marine is critical to us. It is the shipyard. It is something that we all use. I personally use it, and so whatever affects him affects us, and there's not many shipyards in Newport Harbor. And we want him to be successful and profitable and to remain, and not to affect his business at all. Lastly, the parking is very important. Any kind of decrease in parking is a negative. The parking is already kind of an issue, and any development there that decreases parking is a significant negative. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker-
George Garrett, garage tenant for ten-plus years, slip, slip tenant for over twenty years. Thanks to Robin for returning my email. Will, I patronized Brian for the very same reason, keep him in business. So, thanks, everybody. Thanks for getting rid of the first, most of the first responders. I'm going to be safe. It's a happy environment there. I happen to be a dual tenant from a slip and a garage, so I can speak for the people on the slip side of the thing. We do matter. You know, revenue, and you guys can figure all that out, but it's a happy environment. We get people from the oasis center will walk by, talk about fishing. We're fishermen. We catch bluefin tuna. We will share fish with the people that come by, and it's just a happy environment. So, whatever you all decide and talk on, don't forget the community component that's there, and it's just a happy, happy environment. And again, the slip people, the slip tenants make a difference there because we were part of the community there that's going to be affected by both of these plans or rehab plan if it comes through. So, thanks very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. If you have intention on speaking, come on up forward.
Hello, council, and thank you for letting us speak. My name is Deborah Hughes. I've been a business owner in Newport Beach for twenty-five years, a slip owner at Basin Marine for twenty-five years, or not owner, sorry, renter, and also have, excuse me, a garage that I love so much. I was really disappointed that you weren't more open to the public about what the plans were for the area, and the people that are renting the slips and renting the garages didn't know anything about any of these plans, and I think it should be more apparent to everyone what's going on so that everyone can have their say-so and be a part of the community. We really love Basin Marine. We really love being down there. I feel like a lot of the garages have already been rehabbed, and I feel like if you would look at the apartment that has been rehabbed, the furthest one down is absolutely stunning. And you really need to not go into the one that has not been redone by the city, but to go into the one that has been redone by a private owner, and they're absolutely beautiful. And it wouldn't take that much money to have all those apartments working nicely. For, I like the idea of proposal number three, let's do a rehab and just clean up the area. There's beautiful promenade already. There's plenty of public access. People come down boat. They ride their bikes. They walk their dogs. It's a much, very much of a community area, and I'm just wanting to say, I think you should, I would ask that you would consider the rehab idea and a third design idea and along those lines. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else? Okay. We'll bring it back up here. Councilmember Blom.
Thank you. That was, it's great to hear from everyone on this, and I think it was a wonderful return on the proposals to see two local developers want to come back and see what they could make of an area. I think the original intent, and I think that's been a question of some of the garage owners and slip owners, is what was the original intent of this? Why are we even looking at it? Why are we even addressing it? I think that's important. I think you deserve to understand that. In the city, there's a reason why we don't have potholes on our roads. There's a reason why our curbs look the way they do, why our parks are as beautiful as they are, because we run through a program to maintain things before they degrade, before they're at a point where we can't return them. And this one was a big dollar amount. It was just a large dollar amount, and I understand that, looking at it from a private sector position, which I do a lot of the time, you often think, I could do this for less. And you're right. You are absolutely right. If you ever look at government spending, I love you guys. You're amazing. You do what you're supposed to do. But it's sometimes a little bit crazier than what we would do in the private sector, and that's just the reality. But unfortunately, this is property of the state of Newport Beach, and as I sit here, my job and why I was put up here and why some of you like me is because my view is that we need to do things for the betterment of our city forever and for the betterment of the residents. And so, when this proposal went out, I really liked the idea of proposal one, that we're just fixing something that isn't broken, as a lot of the garage owners have said. And I understand there's a fear of losing the garage, but for what I read in most of your emails, it was a storage facility for your boat. And I think I really like this idea that we're increasing storage so that more people, more residents- more residents, more visitors that rent slips have the same amenity that you have. They have a place to store their things to make a marina more accessible, better, something that we're looking for in this city. And you're right, it's a lost gem. It's something that we can't replace. And it's not that I have anything against Mr. Hayes's project. I think he's an amazing developer. He's done great things over the course of his career. But as I look at the project, I feel like it's a deal you make in the private sector. It's a deal where we're making a land deal to build 10 spec homes and find a large revenue stream and in this case, not share the revenue stream, keep it, and then bring the lease back to the city. And so for me, that's great. That is everything the private sector is for. That's everything we want to do to make money. The question is, is this deal about making money or is this deal about continuing amenity in our city that is vastly leaving? We want Basin Marina to stay forever. We want the galley to be there forever. And as I've spoken to both people, I think both proposals say that exact same thing. The question is, is do some make it more of a predominant factor and some make it a secondary factor? And that's how I look at these. I understand the love of doing nothing. I get the idea of a proposal three, but unfortunately, that's not the reality of progressing in a city that needs to constantly make sure that our facilities are top-notch. And I get it, going and remodeling one of the apartments sounds like a great idea, but that's unfortunately not how government always works. Sometimes it's about, how do we make this work for the next 50 years? Not, how do we fix it for the next five or 10? It's a slow system. I've learned it. I wish it was quicker. Staff does a great job. I think that's important to remember. I really love them all. But the mechanism is slow. So for my piece, I just think it's important to remember, I love the idea of who we are and what we are. I want to continue maintaining things like the galley that are icons for us. Basin Marine, which is something that we need forever because we're losing repair yards within this city. And I want to keep what the marina is, a marina. And I think that 10 single-family homes, while it's great from a revenue standpoint, doesn't add anything to the city of Newport Beach. And our goal from this council was best and highest use. And I think that is not always about best and highest revenue. A lot of times, it's about best and highest use to the most amount of people that have the ability to enjoy it. Thank you.
Thank you. I realized that there were a couple of questions asked and then one of them, I think, is probably worth as a foundation. So a handful of people on the, when they're talking about number, potential for a proposal three, that would essentially be the city redoing it. We've looked at that, but I wanted to make sure that you explained the thought process when you said that the buildings were coming to the end of their useful life. Why?
So the, usually when you do these structures out of lumber, you estimate a 75-year lifespan and then when you're closer to the water, you have, you know, degradation and corrosion that occurs a lot. These buildings were built in the 40s, so they're beyond their useful life. We looked at, you know, we definitely did look at a significant remodel, but when you start doing the numbers, and I don't have those numbers in front of me, it's, you're spending a huge amount of money on trying to remodel a building. And a lot of us have done home remodels or even development and you start in one direction and you get that scope creep, just because when you start opening up those walls, you have dry rot, you have termite damage. It's just more cost-effective for us to just tear the buildings down and just build them brand-new. Lauren can talk about, you know, she's dealt with the sewer lines out there, you know, those are already corroded and those have to go and get replaced. It's just a very significant cost to do a remodel and by the point you get it to the point where you want it to be, it was just cheaper just to kind of tear it down. And right now, our FFP has planned about 15.8 million in 2028 and that's pretty much an accurate cost of what we see for the costs.
Okay. The two other questions that were asked, one of them is a question of height of the two proposals versus the existing. Do we have an estimate on those?
We do. And the, again, these are concepts design, but from the height from proposal one, which is your storage and your commercial, I had staff kind of review that. The elevation view shows about 24 feet. The elevation view for, or the section view for proposal two was up to 29 feet, about five feet taller. Again, these are concept plans. These can continue to be changed and revisited, but again, 24 for proposal one and 29 for proposal two.
And what's the existing?
Existing is about the 24 mark.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm going to come back to one of the things you just said in terms of process, but the other one was, there was a question about storage unit at the end, closest to Beacon Bay.
Certainly. So for proposal one, it was maintaining that storage unit that was out there now, which is our dry rack storage where they have the dinghies. Proposal number two would actually get rid of that and make it a driveway access to the parking area, to the parking lot that they've proposed.
Okay. Assume for a moment, and this is the process question, so that folks know that input is still very much going to be gathered. And real quick, I know that the folks in proposal two said that the input from folks in the boating community wasn't, I don't remember exactly how it was phrased, but I'll just say, we're just going to treat that as a slip of the tongue. Of course, we're going to be soliciting your input, so just an FYI. But when we're talking about community outreach on this discussion, walk me, walk us through real quickly. Assume for a moment, we move forward with the staff recommendation. What are the next steps? Where does, where does the opportunity for stakeholders to be involved? How does all of this, how is this going to play out?
And that's a really good question. And that was kind of the rationale of why we came to the council as a study session, because we wanted to kind of daylight everything and be transparent of what we have in front of us, the two proposals, and let everybody take a look at it. I think from hearing the feedback today from the, from the audience, I think it's important that if we get some guidance from the council today, if we move forward with proposal one, it'll be incumbent upon us to do more of like a town hall meeting with everybody included, where we can talk with the development community, the developer and the community from the surrounding residents and talk about what the project looks like, what the project amenities are, start to nail down all the little details that people have some concerns about. And I think that'd be just an important first step, is to do that town hall with the community, the surrounding residents, so everybody has that input process. As we continue to go forward with a project, there'll be opportune time to go to the city council when we bring back, if we move forward, like in E&amp;A and we can talk about it further, what the project is morphing into. And then if we bring back an actual lease agreement, what that project would look, look like as we go forward.
Great. Thanks. Councilmember Avery.
Thank you. Yeah, there aren't many places like this little island at the end of the peninsula there, Basin Marine and the garage is the Galley Cafe. It's really cool and it's, you know, part of the problem of being in Newport Beach for a long time for many of the residents is just seeing parts of it, you know, go away. And that's sort of the nature of things, unfortunately. And some, a little bit of history, after World War II and people came back and a lot of folks from LA, Pasadena moved down and marinas were built with, with storage, like the one we have down there at the yacht basin. Ardell built storage under what was this stuff, shirt restaurant. It was Keno's and now it's, you know, a $600 t-shirt place. So that was normal, but now today you look, the largest marina operator in town, California Recreation Company, Irvine Company, they don't offer any storage for their boats other than dock boxes. And that's true all around the harbor. There might be a couple of small, family-operated ones that I'm not aware of. Well, I'm aware of all of them, but I don't think there's any storage for boaters. And marinas are for using your boat. They're not for storing your boat. I mean, they are, but the idea is you, you're using your boat because it's expensive to have a boat, it's expensive to pay the rent. And, you know, I know that that marina, the city marina is a good deal compared to what's going on out there right now. The rates have absolutely skyrocketed and it's great for the folks that are there. And I know that marina gets used a lot and the people get out on their boats, the fishing folks, sailors. It's really great. It's a really cool thing. And I look at it and I go, no matter what happens, there's going to be a chunk of it missing. You know, if it gets redeveloped, either Plan One or Two, I look at that, the garages that people really worked hard and made them very nice and they've been gathering, social gathering spots. That's not going to happen in Plan One, which I'm not a critic of, but, you know, going inside and they're just reduced to small cubicles, if you will. And that's, you know, that's part of the loss here. And so from my perspective, you know, from a rational standpoint, does a city want to collect probably $2 million a year from between property taxes on new homes and Plan Two and just the ground lease revenue? But the marina remains the same. The reason everybody's there is to use their boats, is to get out and go sailing. And the rest of it is sort of, you know, it's wonderful because this is sort of a culture that's developed down there. But in my view, you know, the marina is the number one thing. It's about getting out, having access to get to your boat, get out on the water. I've got a boat here in the harbor, I've had it for 25 years and I don't have a place to store anything. But the first thing I did when I bought the boat was get a pickup truck because I was constantly hauling stuff back and forth to my house and it wasn't perfect, but it's the way I think most people work it because most people don't have storage the size of a garage near like this marina does, which makes it really nice for the folks that are in the basin, in the Basin Marina there. So I think that's a decision we're going to have to work collectively. I just think, yeah, that we need more community outreach for sure and get people together and talk about it because there's more going on here than just the money. It's, it's, you know, kind of, there's a little bit of loss going on here, regardless of what happens, as far as I'm concerned. I'm not sure, I'm, I think we should take a strong look at the feasibility of rehabbing it exactly like it is. And the flip side of it to me is then you go the other direction and just build 10 homes and bring in $2 million a year and that gets plowed back into the tidelands, into the uplands and it's done for the betterment of the whole community. So there's just different ways you can argue this, but I totally get the loss that people are concerned with. And I've got several friends down there that have boats and just, it's a wonderful thing. It's when people are down there and they're on the, they're on the weekends and the excitement and they're talking, seeing their friends. But a lot of that community happens on the docks, too. So I think it's just, the yacht club, I've known about for a long time, of course. And it's a, you know, small organization, but again, it's a place for people to go. And so these are places like the Yachts Club and the American Legion and these places where people can afford to go and have a great time. And it's all about, you know, getting out on your, on your boat, certainly for the American Legion and all that. And so I, I just hope we can kind of hang on to much of that through this, through this deal. But if we can't, I think we should be getting the revenues, the max revenues off that land. And I think if it gets developed, number one, Plan One gets developed, I've got to think the rents are going to go up and the storage blockers are not going to be cheap and, you know, there's a $15 million investment there. So I think both developers are great and they do a good job. So it's, we've got, I think, come together and decide what, you know, what is best for the, for the city and also for the folks that are invested down there more emotionally than anything else and to keep what they've got. So more to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Grant.
Just some brief comments. First of all, I wanted to thank staff for really digging into this. It's been a process and you absolutely have presented it in a very clear way for everybody to understand. I also want to thank all the members of the public who either emailed or attended today because I think the biggest takeaway from today is that we've had a healthy opportunity here at the very, very beginning of this process to understand a lot of the stakeholders and a lot of what's involved here. It's not as simple as just tear it all down and build something new, that there's a lot of different opinions, there's a lot of stakeholders. I for one, understand the need in our community, Newport Beach, for preserving the culture and heritage of our marine community. And we have lost a lot of marine-serving uses in our community over the years and making sure that we leave those opportunities there for the, you know, longstanding stakeholders that we have there, like the galleon, Basin Marine and the marina users. That's very important to the culture of our community. So I am very encouraged that many people are weighing in here. I think that the two proposals, they're both world-class proposals. I don't think we would deny that. I was, I'm actually a little discouraged because we really only got one proposal for one thing and one proposal for another thing. It's not like we have a lot to compare and there's components of each that are very compelling. Clearly, as Councilmember Avery has mentioned, it's very compelling to look at an income stream for 50 years that could supply a lot of resources that are necessary for the tidelands and for the city. It's also very compelling to preserve the culture that exists there right now. So it is, to me, a little disappointing that we didn't get more input from the development community about what's, what's possible there. In particular, as someone in the public mentioned, it's a beautiful spot and I would hope that as we move into this process of understanding what exactly will be there, one of the things that I do think would be of benefit is to be able to encourage more use of it for the general public in some way. Obviously, you know, we have the slips, we have the garages. That's great. That's a limited amount of people, but the idea that we would have parks or promenades or some use of that space that doesn't just block it off, I think would be a good idea. You know, neither of the proposals necessarily had a huge amount of that use. There's a limited amount in both. So I for one, I'm looking forward to more progress on this. Certainly, I have a question for the city attorney. If we were to go with any residential serving use, the RFP did not really communicate that out to the development community and I would wonder if somehow we would need to like redo that process. And also, I would question from the community development side, if maybe if we were to reevaluate the RFP, if we would get more input from the development side. So these are just questions and obviously, you know, I think a lot of people here were like very concerned that we, you know, this is the first we've all heard of it. This is the first this council has heard of it as well. We have not had, been privy to, pretty much the first. This week is when all of this came to light in the public. So this is more of a marathon than a sprint. We're going to have more opportunity and I'm especially encouraged by my fellow council members that are encouraging that we have as much public input as possible. So thank you.
Did you want the questions answered from city attorney and community development?
I don't think those are questions for immediately. I think they're just questions that I have that we can, if there's an immediate answer, sure, but if not, if we need to be vetting those questions, that's just something for us to be considering.
So I think that, I'm sorry, Assistant City Manager did a very good job of outlining that if you went forth with a housing proposal, you would have to make, under the Surprised Lands Act, it available for potential affordable housing uses. So there'd be some, some input there from affordable housing users potentially. You know, the RFP definitely didn't focus on kind of, on the housing piece of it. If you went out with a new RFP, you might get more responses, but I think you could legally move forward at this point with the proposal you received.
All right. Anything else to add?
I'll turn to Lauren. Did you get some more interest from, besides the two, as far as interest from other developers?
No, we didn't. We only received the two proposals during the procurement process. We did put it out to as many contacts in the development community through our planet bids portal as we could find. So we would have limited options to put it back out and get additional feedback, I think.
I guess that's surprising, given, you know, the high profile of that property. I don't, I don't know why there was a chilling effect on getting more proposals in. I absolutely, you know, understand what you're saying. I'm just, it's surprising to me because it's-
I'm just, it's surprising to me because it's such a gem of a piece of property and would be such an opportunity for any developer, but, you know, we have to work with what we get.
Councilmember Kleiman.
Thank you, and thank you to staff, as well as to everyone from the public that we've heard from on this. I'm inclined to go with staff's recommendation, as well as our city attorney. I think the reason we didn't hear from more developers consistent with Proposal Two was because the RFP was more narrow in scope and didn't open up that option. I think if you were to do a different RFP that asked for a housing component, you would see a lot of responses to that. And so that's certainly an option, as we're discussing here, go that route. I think what we're hearing is that that's probably going to open up a can of worms that we probably don't really want to get into, at least from my perspective. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll finish it off and then see if we can figure out a direction. So one of the things we have in our city is, every city has this, it's called the general plan, and the idea is to work through all the different elements of your city and try to plan out the different uses and try to find compatibility with them. Over the last, gosh, four years, we've worked through a housing element to try to figure out where we want to see new housing, where we want to put a lot of new housing. This was not an area we contemplated for a lot of new housing. And so that's probably one of the reasons, and we've updated that housing element, it's, not necessarily that it would be out of compliance with it, but that, but when we're looking at this, on the housing side, you know, we have an idea of where to put a lot of housing, but again, this wasn't it. So when we're looking at an RFP, I read through the RFP when you're doing the presentation, and I tended to agree with it, in particular, keeping the Galle Cafe. So I'm glad to see both of them had that one in there. But the, on this one, I guess there's maybe a few things that might be worth just looking at on item number one, in terms of some of the community input. There might be some discussion about size of storage, there might be some discussion about, do we need, I can't remember what the number was, 102, potentially less, I don't know, but that might be one of the things worth taking a look at and having the discussions as part of it. But the other part of the general plan, that is, one of the other elements is the harbor-facing element. And it's the, it's really important that we try to make sure that we're maximizing the harbor and bay-facing elements, that there's a lot of discussion in this, it's 18 pages, if you'd like to read it, please go ahead. But one of the things that we contemplate is making sure that we have, you know, we have fuel docks, and we're making sure that we're supporting those. We're, you know, we also contemplate the idea of making sure that there's, you know, there's a sufficient number of dry docks and basically making sure that people who come into our harbor and stay in our harbor can stay in our harbor in order to make sure that they are, you know, adequately, there's adequate maintenance options, there's adequate repair options, a lot of those. So sometimes, and given that I've been the chair of the city's finance committee for six years, it's really hard for me to say the following, but sometimes you're not supposed to maximize revenue with certain aspects of your locations. And making sure that boats are able to access and use the Marina properly is one of those times. So when we're looking at this one, I tend to think that the scope of the RFP was correct, that this is, that we do need to be moving forward with this. I would also suggest, given that we have some time as we're kind of moving forward on this, we are about to, and this may be, actually, I should probably be looking at the city manager on this one, we are looking at our CIP coming up pretty soon. It'll be coming back to the council pretty soon. That's probably a good time for us to just take another quick look at, you know, the, I'd like to maybe flesh out the end of the useful life discussion just a little bit more so we can have that public discussion, because since it's part of our FFP, if we were going to move forward with it, it would need to be in our CIP, which actually it has been for years now. And so, I apologize, everything's an acronym. The CIP is a capital improvement program that usually looks about five years out for all of our projects that we plan on doing. That documents, a long document, 100-plus pages. The FFP is the Facilities Financing Plan. It literally looks at every building that we have in the city that is owned by us that will eventually need to be replaced, and we plan for it. So when they were referencing the FFP, looking at it by about $15 million in 2028, that's been in the, that's actually been in our planning document for probably well over a decade at this point. So I would just suggest that as we're kind of looking at the CIP again this year, just make sure we're looking at that, because I don't anticipate a decision being made right away or before we have that coming back to us, because that's going to be in the next couple of meetings. In terms of process, I probably am going to need to take a straw vote up here and kind of see which direction we're going to go, or at least maybe a direction. And so, given kind of what I've heard up here, a few things. Number one, assuming for a moment that we did a straw poll and proposal number one was the favored proposal, that doesn't mean that that comes back to us at the next meeting and we sign a contract, to be clear. The reason that is definitely not what it means is because there does need to be some stakeholder engagement. As discussed, this is kind of, this is a concept plan, it's a well-thought-out concept plan, but it's still a concept plan. Clearly, we're going to need to have some discussion with, let's see, I wrote down at least Promontory Bay, Beacon Bay, and the folks, I'm going to say Yacht Club, but it would include boaters who are not part of the Yacht Club. I would also expect discussions with the folks at the Galle and Basin Marine as well. And so to Mr. Jurges's point, the next step would probably be to have a town hall somewhere that's well-noticed, so you all can come out and talk with the folks who are proposing it, see if you can make some suggestions that make sense for everybody. But I think that's, I think that's probably the direction I'd like to go with this one after hearing everything and the discussions here. And again, you know, we probably should at least have another public discussion as part of the CIP process, just talking about, you know, what we've done to date to try to figure out whether we could rehab it and why we got to that number. And unless I've got other comments. All right. So I think that's going to be my proposal, is that we move forward with option number one with, you know, with next steps being community engagement and also, you know, the option for staff to start working through deal terms as they're dealing with that. And again, well-noticed, well-noticed community engagement. If you support that idea, why don't you go ahead and raise your hand? Yeah, four is four one. All right. Appreciate everyone. Obviously, this is not the end of our discussion. So we're going to be moving on with the rest of our meeting now. So if you are here for this item, I'm going to give you a chance to exit if you'd like to, before I move on to the next items, just because I know a lot of you are here and want to make sure it's minimum disruption. You can stick around if you want. Just saying. Mr. Stapleton. Okay. We're going to move into public comments. So while folks are exiting, we're going to move into public comments, since our city clerk has lost her voice, I'm going to go ahead and read it. City Council, excuse me, "The City Council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are invited on items listed on the agenda and non-agenda items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The city council has the discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items." At this time, do we have public comments on agenda or non-agenda items?
Honorable Mayor O'Neill, members of the city council, again, my name is Bill Kenny. This time, I'm here representing the Newport Harbor Foundation. The Newport Harbor Foundation was created for the purpose of preserving, protecting, and enhancing Newport Harbor for the city of Newport Beach, the homeowners on or near the bay, the commercial operators in the bay, and the recreational users of the bay. The Newport Harbor Foundation is pleased to announce that its first annual State of the Bay luncheon will take place on Wednesday, May 15th, Newport Harbor Yacht Club. And we want to thank each and every one of you for your heartfelt support of our luncheon and our organization. I was hopeful that I could stay for the regular meeting, but unfortunately, I have another commitment. For the public, information is available on the luncheon at www.nuitportharborfoundation.org. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. All right. So that ends our study session. I'd like to give us up here just a quick break, so let's see, it is currently 5:46. 10 minutes, 5 minutes? I'd like a break. So I'm going to take five minutes, so we'll just reconvene in five minutes. Thanks. Welcome back to the April 9th, 2024 city council meeting. Oh, she's going to do it. All right, here we go. Roll call, please.
The record will reflect that Councilmember Weigand has an excused absence.
All right. The invocation will be by Councilmember Grant and the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Kleiman. Please rise.
Thank you. Please join me in the invocation for tonight. I want to thank all those that have gathered here and recognize the abundant blessings of our beautiful city and that we all be sustained with good health, friendship, and the honor of the responsibilities that we are given in being good stewards in this city. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Please join me in the pledge to our great nation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
"The City Council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The city council has the discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items."
Thank you. Now is the time for city council announcements and oral reports from city council and committee activities. Councilmember Kleiman.
Thank you. I helped kick off the National Library Week at Library Storytime in Crona del Mar. I also attended our OCAG Annual Conference, where our very own city manager Grace Leung was one of the panelists, along with all of my council colleagues and pretty much our entire city staff. I attended the Ubalboa Marina Public Dock ribbon cutting. I was actually hoping that former Mayor Duffield was still going to be in the room for that, because that credit goes very much to him. Also had the pleasure of speaking at the CDMRA Annual Meeting and attended my SCAG Board and Regional Policy Meetings as well as the Newport Beach Police Department Mobile Cafe at the Farmers Market in Crona del Mar over the weekend. Great event, very well-attended. And I just want to announce that Monday's Aviation Committee meeting is going to be postponed to allow time for Councilmember Blom and I to lobby in DC and report back to the committee.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Blom.
Nothing is, is my way. Speed over verbores. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Avery.
Yeah, I stood in for my colleague Joe Stapleton at the Water Quality and Coast of Tidelands Committee meeting. Had a really good committee meeting. Looking forward to having you back.
Yes.
And also, I had the pleasure of, I'm on the Board of Advocates for Oasis and meeting there 8:00 AM at Oasis, and they gave us an update on what's going on, and it's all good there at Oasis. So there's a pretty consistent group of folks that attend the meetings, and the purpose of the advocates is to hear what's going on at Oasis, and there's a lot going on, and to kind of get that word out into the community. I've got.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Grant.
Thank you. I also attended the Mobile Cafe with Councilmember Kleiman this weekend, and want to once again thank Steve Oberon, who is in charge of that for the police department, and everyone else who attended. It's a great way to reach out to the community, and it was especially good this time, it was in CDM at the Farmers Market. So thank you to the whole police department for that effort. I also attended, again, with Councilmembers Kleiman, the Third Annual Women Making a Difference Award Breakfast. It was really a huge pleasure to see so many women from Newport Beach win this award. There was awards in the legal community, and a number of the winners were, came from Newport Beach, so that was especially rewarding. I want to announce that, as you see on the screen, the Newport Beach Animal Shelter, of which I'm on the Board of Directors, will be having another Adopt a Pet event on Saturday, April 20th. The public is invited to attend and check out the new digs, i.e. the picture, and hopefully adopt a pet. The shelter is overflowing with adoptable pets, so this is a good time, if you're considering it, to help out. I want to congratulate Chief Boils and Fire Marshal Gillespie for their remarkable achievement on behalf of the Fire Department and all the benefit it's going to bring to the city of Newport Beach regarding our fire insurance and other insurance in our city. It's remarkable that we can achieve that 1%, and they deserve a huge amount of congratulations from everybody. I'll be doing Library Storytime tomorrow in honor of Library Week, and that's always a great honor for us on council and others in the city to be able to participate with our library. It is our number one visitor-serving amenity in the city other than our beaches, and so we're proud to have such a wonderful library system. And thank you to the librarians that are here today and received their award. It's great to work with you. And then finally, I want to finish by saying thank you for attending.
Awesome. Thank you. Mayor Pratam.
Yeah, I did a ride-along with Sergeant Maslin in Area 1. We spent a lot of time focused on the pure parking lots, spent a lot of time talking about enforcement when it comes to RVs and people living in these RVs. So we spent a lot of time going up and down the peninsula, looking for areas where we can continue to improve quality of life for the residents in District 1. I also attended the public dock, the Balboa Marina. It's pretty incredible to see, I was serving on the Harbor Commission 10 years ago when we started that project. So in fashion to see that completed, that was a yeoman effort to the Irvine Company and the county and the city of Newport Beach. I also did a tour with the code enforcement team with Jonathan over at the Balboa Village, walked around the fun zone, a lot of businesses encroaching on sidewalks, so continued to focus on that. I also attended the CDMRA Annual Meeting, and kudos to Councilwoman Kleiman for her report on all things Newport Beach and the general plan update that's coming up. And I also attended the Newport Beach Chamber of Commerce Scholarship Dinner with Councilwoman Grant and Weigand. The future is really bright here in Newport Beach. We honored 35 students from Newport Harbor, CDM High School, and Sage. And one of the questions at our table was, should I go to Harvard, Yale, or Stanford? I've been accepted to all three. So I'll tell you what I told them in secrecy, but I said, that's a first-world problem, so congratulations on your hard work. What a great decision to make. And then tomorrow, I will also be speaking, or I don't know if it's storytelling, or singing or dancing at the library on the peninsula at 10:30 with some babies, so that'll be fun.
10:30.
10:30, you'll be there, Noah.
Thank you, I'll be there. Great. The answer is Stanford. So we're going to go with, so I was able to attend East Bluff PTA to provide a certificate. We all, the Marina pure ribbon cutting was fantastic. I was able to go out on food delivery at Oasis Senior Center with Age Well as part of a program and delivering food to homebound seniors. I really appreciate all the work that they're doing in our community. I was able to attend yesterday the Mayor's Youth Council Final Meeting, and then on Thursday, we have the Finance Committee meeting. And then what you see on the slide right now, the city is now accepting applications. And then what you see on the slide right now, the city is now accepting applications for the annual community grant program. Grants are available in two categories, community programs and special events. Special events grants support both smaller community events and larger signature events taking place between July 1st, 2024, and June 30th, 2025. The application deadline for both grant programs is April 23rd. For more information, please visit NewportBeachCA.gov/Grants. All right. We'll move into our Consent Calendar Items. Madam Clerk.
This is the time in which council members may pull items from the Consent Calendar for discussion, items 1 through 10. Public comments are also invited on Consent Calendar Items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the Consent Calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under Consent Calendar are considered to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports on each one of the items recommended in action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the City Council votes on the motion unless members of the City Council request specific items to be discussed and/or removed from the Consent Calendar for separate action.
All right, council members, do you have any items to pull or clarifications to note? Councilmember Kleiman.
I have none.
Councilmember Blom.
I have a conflict on item 6 due to a real property interest on 417 Thirtieth Street and 501 Thirtieth Street.
Councilmember Avery.
None.
Councilmember Grant.
None.
Mayor Protem.
None.
I have none. Do I have a motion?
Yeah, I'll move the Consent Calendar except for item number 6. I'm sorry, yeah, item 6 because Councilwoman Blom has a conflict in noting the amendments to item number 1, the minutes.
I have a second. Second by Councilmember Kleiman. All right, we'll go out to public comment on the Consent Calendar Items. Do we have any public comment on Consent Calendar Items? Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back. Let's go ahead and vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance title for item 3. Ordinance 2024-7, An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach Terminating One Non-Exclusive Franchise Agreement for Commercial Solid Waste. Motion passes. 7-0.
Oh, it's 6-0, but that's...
Sorry, sorry.
Okay, I got you. All right, so we'll move now into public comments on non-agenda items. Madam Clerk.
Public comments are invited on non-agenda items, generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
All right. Public comments.
Hi, Amy Sink. Dear Mayor O'Neill and honorable members of the City Council, my husband, Marshal Sink, and I have made Corona Del Mar a home for nearly 25 years and raised our family at 207 Evening Canyon Road in Shore Cliff. For decades, we have been active and involved members of the Newport Beach community through PFO, the Corona Del Mar Residents Association, and through my work as a journalist. We voted for many of you on the dais and we've hosted events at our home, which many city staff and elected officials have attended over the years. As you are all aware, on October 2020, a city water main broke and catastrophically flooded our home. We rebuilt the home entirely, spending a large amount of money. When we were getting ready to move back in November 2022, a city water main broke again and catastrophically flooded our home again. Those City of Newport Beach water main breaks, along with at least three other water main breaks in the Shore Cliffs neighborhood since 2020, have shattered our feeling of safety and security in our own home. We have been displaced since October 2020 and have moved more than a dozen times. Our insurance stopped paying for this housing in January 31st. As you know, after this happened, we asked the city to pay for temporary housing. The city ignored our request. We have since learned that in January of this year, not long before we asked the city to pay for temporary housing, the city decided to reimburse our insurance company, State Farm, for over $2 million. City Council voted to pay State Farm millions of dollars of damages rather than assisting one of its residents with temporary housing. Even more insulting is that this payment was hidden from the public. It was only provided to us after a court ordered the city to provide the documents. These facts are outrageous, that the city water mains have displaced us from our home for nearly four years, that we asked for the city's assistance to pay for our housing while displaced and the city ignored our plea, that instead the city paid our insurance company millions of dollars before paying its own resident a single penny. The city has utterly abandoned us, does not care about our well-being, does not care to help us as we try to cope with this terrible four-year-old deal that the city caused our family to suffer. No resident of the city should be treated with such disregard. You should all be ashamed of yourselves. I have copies, if you want me to leave them.
You can leave it with our city attorney, who's handling our outside litigation that you've referenced in that public comment.
Good evening again, Adam Leverens. The regular City Council Meeting two weeks ago, while speaking on an agenda item related to the 38th Street and Lake Avenue Landscape Improvement Projects, which was a request from city staff to reject two bids that had come in because they were 46% higher than anticipated, I made comparisons to the forthcoming offshore mooring increases of 300 to 500%. And Mayor O'Neill indicated that I was going off topic for the agenda item. I appreciate how you handled that and I apologize. My intent was not to skirt the rules of public comment, but as I can speak about it now, I'm going to continue a little bit. I feel that comparisons are very important in decision-making process and during the Balboa Yacht Basin discussion, I heard the word comparisons mentioned a number of times. The Netzer appraisal of December 26 last year and the CBRE appraisal use comparisons in various ways. And I'll again say that for the use of the same state lands as other users, what the city's proposing or the Harbor Commission is contemplating will have offshore mooring holders pay substantially more than state lands commission benchmark rates for Orange County, much more than city pier permit fees, and much more than the CBRE appraisal. I also attended a state lands commission meeting last week and there were more than half a dozen proposals for peers in Huntington Harbor on the agenda, and each of those also will pay much more than what's being proposed for offshore mooring permits. Four weeks ago, at the regular meeting, I talked about hypocrisy and I don't intend to offend, but imagine I may. If you can look at a bid and it's 40% higher than you anticipated and you send it out for rebids, but then you look at something else that isn't going to increase a bunch of individuals' expenses by 3 to 500%, it would seem to me that, hey, maybe, maybe you should get another look at a different appraisal there. Fortunately, the Newport Mooring Association paid for an appraisal, so you don't even have to contract it out. But from what I understand, it's pretty much being disregarded and I just am continuing to complain. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Bring it back for just a second. Mr. Harp, since one of the public comments referenced litigation, and I will just say, I understand the frustration, but could you please explain what reimbursing an insurance company actually means in the context of that litigation?
Yeah, absolutely. So as Ms. Sink noted, the city entered into a settlement agreement with State Farm to reimburse them for costs that they paid of basically repairing her house, including personal items that were damaged in the flood. As you know, the city paid, you know, two-plus million dollars for that. So those are really all, it's all funds that are being used to repair her house and replace her belongings. And I think it's important to note that the city's doing significant amount of work out there on the street to add additional protections that will protect Ms. Sink's property. So I think that the city has done a lot. You know, we are in litigation, so it really can't, it wouldn't be appropriate for the council to comment on it, but it's important for the public to know that.
I appreciate that. Okay, let's move into public hearings. Item number 11. Do we need a staff report on this? Do we have any comments before we go to public comment? All right, we can go to public comment on this item. Do I see any public comments on this item?
Mayor O'Neill, members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. I was surprised that there's no explanation. This is a major housing proposal off of Bristol. Apparently you must have been briefed on it somehow, other than the presentation that you're not having tonight. One question I would have about this, which I would think you would be asking if it's the first time you've seen it, is about the development agreement. We're asking for this developer to pay quite a different amount per unit than the next one. This one seems to be getting a relative bargain, as I can understand, about $24,000 per unit compared to the next one is like $43,000 per unit. I don't know, the numbers, I don't know why they're different. I don't know where they came from at all. I noticed in developing that number, it's broken down, we're giving them a break on a park fee that they should be paying, a small amount of that, but somehow charging them although less than the other developer for a general benefit fee. Wouldn't it make sense that we should be charging the full park benefit fee because we want to develop parks in this area to support the residents and give them the break on the general benefit fee? So why are we doing it that way? I don't understand. As I mentioned in writing, in connection with the other project, we have a general plan policy. The mayor mentioned the general plan and trying to adhere to that in connection with the study session item. Part of that is to develop a more walkable airport area. So we have a policy, a street-like spruce, which this is to be on. We're supposed to engage in traffic calming. We're supposed to perhaps put parking on it to slow down speeds, improve the sidewalks. I don't see either of these projects doing that. And I'm not sure what else I want to say about this one. I could point out that neither of these projects is doing a great deal to help us with our affordable housing component that we need to meet our RENA requirement, but I'll say more about that when we come to the next one. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please. All right, we'll bring it back up. I'll just say two quick things. No, I was not briefed before this. Yes, it's almost near 400 pages worth of information in here that I've read, so I felt fairly sufficiently briefed. I will note, though, one of the things that was just mentioned is the park fee. I agree with the reduction. I know we need to incentivize, and this, by the way, goes for the next item, so I'm just not going to reference it twice. I recognize, I agree with the negotiated number. I agree with where we're going with this. It's just it's, it is particularly frustrating to, you know, look at a number like this and realize for both of them, it's essentially a reduction of $1.3 million to make sure that we're building affordable housing. And that is not an issue for the, that's not the developer's fault, it's not the city's fault. I would just say, when you're dealing with a state that makes dictates and mandates as opposed to, you know, just trying to incentivize as much housing as possible, this is what happens. You end up incentivizing affordable housing at the expense of more open space, and that's just wrong. But that, again, is the system that they've created because they are trying to just get, you know, numbers instead of figuring out what's right for every city out there. Anyway, I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve staff's recommendation. Do I have a second? Second by Mayor Protem. Any more discussion on this one? All right, let's go ahead and vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance titles for Ordinance 2024-8, An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach Approving a Plan Community Development Plan Amendment for the Residences at 1400 Bristol Street Project located at 1400 Bristol Street, and Ordinance 2024-9, Approving a Development Agreement for the Residences at 1400 Bristol Street Project located at 1400 Bristol Street. Motion passes 6-0.
Thank you. We'll move on to the next item, item number 12, on the same question. Do we need a staff report? Any discussion before we go out to public comment? All right, we'll go out to public comment on this item.
Mayor O'Neill, members of the council, my name again is Jim Mosher. As I think we just heard you overrode the objections of the Airport Land Use Commission on the previous item. I think you're going to be doing that on this one also. I have to admit, I did not read the entire 310 pages of, 311 of the staff report. I did get as far as the sixth page, and maybe you understood this, I did not, that this is a proposal, the previous one was for a large apartment complex. This one is for for-sale condominiums. And at the bottom of page six, it's explaining, "Some of these will be affordable units, a small number of them." And at the end of that paragraph at the bottom of page six, it says that upon resale, should one of these affordable units be resold, the seller of the unit retains the value of any improvements, their down payment, and the seller's proportionate share of the appreciation, and the city recaptures any initial subsidy and its proportionate share of the appreciation." I have no idea how you decide what is the proportionate share between the affordable purchaser and the city. It sounds to me, to me, to my surprise, because I thought these were privately sold units. Apparently, the city is a participant in purchasing or renting the units. I do not understand what that's talking about or how it works. And then I realize your resistance to the state mandate, but I would point out that it is apparently a requirement that we're going to need to build, not build, but at least plan for 2,707 affordable units that needed to be added to our general plan. And some of you are, I think, hoping for those to be generated by the free market. This is the one area of the city where we actually have an inclusionary requirement, so some affordable housing needs to be built, but it's not being produced at a very great rate. Out of these two projects, the last, the one you just approved, and this one, it will be adding 296 new residential units to our city. 29 of those will be affordable to very low-income people or families, but we need to build 1,456 of those. So the rate of getting 29 out of 296 means we're going to have to build 14,861 units to meet our RENA requirement for very low. And out of the 296 units, we're getting two that are affordable to so-called low-income families. We need to produce 930 of those. So at a rate of 1 out of 150, we're going to have to build 137,640 units to meet that RENA requirement at the ratio we're getting them here, even with an incentive. And no moderate units at all, so we'd need an infinite number of houses to get any moderate units at this rate. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. I'll bring it back. I have the same comments from my last one. So I'll go ahead and make the motion on this as well to approve the staff recommendation. Do I have a second? Second again by, all right, I'll do the second by Councilmember Grant. Do I have any further comment? All right, let's go ahead and vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance titles for Ordinance 2024-10, An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach Approving a Plan Community Development Plan Amendment for the Residences at 1401 Quail Street located at 1401 Quail Street, and Ordinance 2024-11, Approving a Development Agreement for the Residences at 1401 Quail Street Project located at 1401 Quail Street. Motion passes 6-0.
All right, thank you. We'll move into item number 13, Sculpture Exhibition in Civic Center Park, Phase 9. How fast is the staff presentation?
My part would be very fast.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just the, at the March City Arts Commission meeting, the commission did approve 10 sculptures and alternates for your consideration. and alternates for your consideration to vote on tonight for Phase 9 of the sculpture exhibition. And with that, we do have project team managers from Arts Orange County, Richard Stein, who is the CEO and President of Arts Orange County, and Nicholas Therkettle, who's the program coordinator there for Arts Orange County. And they do have a presentation on the 10 sculptures and alternates, if you'd like to see them.
Well, I think we do have pictures inside of the -- inside of our packet. I don't want to cut off any discussion or questions up here, but I'm not sure we're going to necessarily need to go through the entire presentation. Do we have any questions for Mr. Stein or our staff? I do recommend looking at them for folks watching it. You can see it, actually, Stu News ran something this morning, and then they also -- it's also in our council packet. Ms. Grant, Councilmember Grant, excuse me.
Well, since we're not going to have our full presentation, I just wanted to take an opportunity to thank the members of the library staff and the Arts Commission and Arts OC for, once again, providing this community with a wonderful cultural amenity. And I know it takes a lot of hard work, and it is an important piece of this civic center, and we're really pleased to see the caliber of the art is continuing to rise and that the relationships that we're creating with the larger arts community continues to grow. And we're very appreciative of everything that you're doing to make that happen. So thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, do we have any public comments on this particular item? Nope. All right, let's bring it back. Councilmember Grant, do you want to make the motion?
Sure, I'll move that. We passed this item as presented by the library staff.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Avery. Let's go ahead and vote. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk.
A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the City Council at either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
All right, do we have any motions? Seeing none, we are adjourned. Thank you.